Okay, we are ready. So in accordance with OMA and obviously during the pandemic, we are hosting the March 2022 Commission on Social Innovation meeting via Facebook Live. So we are, all members are remote today. So we will get started in calling to order this meeting. Irene, can I please help, if you could please help me call attendance so that we can establish quorum? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner De Laurentis? Commissioner Flores? Commissioner Males?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Siskillen?
Present. Good afternoon.
Commissioner Alsbury? Commissioner Haddon? Commissioner Juarez? Commissioner Thomas? Commissioner Freeman?
She's here, but I believe we couldn't hear her.
No.
Oh, hi. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
And if you could also mark Commissioner/Alderwoman Haddon is also present.
Thank you.
Sorry not to unmute. Yeah, present.
Thank you. Commissioner Aglopé? Commissioner Rice?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Austin?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Jonin?
Present.
Commissioner Malone?
Present.
Commissioner Anderson? Commissioner Brutus? Commissioner Cooley?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Raymer?
Present.
Commissioner Espinoza? Commissioner Dubois?
I'm sorry, present. I couldn't, yeah, come here. Commissioner Dubois is present too. Good to see everybody.
Thank you. Commissioner Schleisser? Commissioner Caliento?
Present.
We have the Axel Fischow Critical? Thank you. Member Vice Chair Mark Lane?
Present.
Thank you. And then we have our Commission Chair, Commissioner Almanaya.
Present. And I do see Commissioner Juarez just joining us right now, so please take note of that.
And then Madam Chair, I don't know if that's Christie De Laurentis's phone. Is that Christie on the KDL?
It is. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Christie, for joining us. We'll make sure we note that.
Commissioner Freeman is also on the call.
Thank you. Noted. And I see that, I believe Commissioner Brutus just joined as well.
Hi, Anna Juarez is here.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Juarez, Commissioner Brutus, for joining us. So we do have quorum today. Um, I believe we've had, we've noted everybody who's present. Um, we will begin with public testimony. To my knowledge, Irene, there was no public testimony submitted. Is this still accurate?
That's correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for January and February. Um, so I will entertain a motion to approve and then a secondar, please.
So moved. Howard Mills.
Thank you. And then we'll have a second from, I didn't catch that. Was that Commissioner Haddon? Thank you. Great. Were there any corrections to the minutes from the last two meetings? Did everybody receive them and was able to see them?
Yes.
Okay, great. So there was no corrections. Now we, all of those for approval signify by saying ayes?
Aye.
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 For all those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, everyone. Great. So we will go up and now discuss any updates from the Chair and Vice Chair. I personally don't have any updates. As you all know, we're still in the county working through ARPA funding and trying to, you know, solidify what exactly are the programs that we're going to be funding as a government entity. Just a reminder, Cook County will be receiving $1 billion in funding. So there have been some exciting advances, particularly a workaround investment in our health system and our behavioral health. Also this week, there were some trainings and info sessions for $50 million that will be going to gun violence prevention initiatives. So there's definitely a lot happening and I'd be more than happy at the next meeting, once things get a little bit more solidified, to come back to this commission to report back on some of those really exciting projects. Vice Chair Lane, was there anything on your end that you would like to update the commission on?
A couple of things along the way, but my suggestion is, given the importance of the testimony we're about to hear, we move into that meets, if that's okay with you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I just want to welcome Kathleen, Commissioner Caliento, for joining us. This is her first meeting. We're excited to have her onboard the commission. We're excited to, you know, for you to bring your expertise, your knowledge to the commission. Thank you so much for accepting.
And I will echo that. Not only should we be excited about having Kathleen with us, but we should be looking forward to extraordinary contributions from her. She is, you know, just an amazing thought leader with extraordinary accomplishments and, you know, is really the subject of universal praise. So thank you. And she has just an uncompromising calendar. So the fact that she's willing to take time away to join us and contribute to our urgent work is further testament to her leadership. And I'm just thrilled that she accepted our invitation to join us. So Kathleen, let me echo Commissioner Naya's words and tell you that I personally, and on behalf of this group, am deeply grateful to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lane and Commissioner Naya. The honor is mine.
One other thing, we could barely hear you. You're so soft spoken.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, the pleasure is all mine. Thank you so much for having me.
We'll see about that, but thank you. We appreciate it. So, Madam Chair, with your permission, I think we can get into the main event here. Would that be appropriate?
Absolutely. Thank you, Court Chair, Vice Chair Lane. Yes, take it away. Thank you.
So I will take it. So we are really very fortunate today to have two key leaders of Chicago Community Trust join us. Each is a, an extraordinary subject matter expert and they will be providing to us testimony, I think we're going to find very valuable and as I will connect a little later in the session, ties directly to earlier testimony and a pre-existing initiative on which the commission is working. So, welcome to Ayana Kachoros, who holds the title of Senior Director of Policy and Advocacy at Chicago Community Trust, which means that she leads the trust's local, state, and federal policy strategy. Before that, she held a similar role with the University of Chicago's Office of Civic Engagement and before that was in a leadership role at the MacArthur Foundation. So she is obviously a leader wherever she goes and obviously she understands Cook County and she understands the landscape, the problems and the opportunities, and she will be addressing all of those. And I'm also thrilled to have with us today Janay Defell, who is the leader of the community desk Chicago, which is a program affiliate of the trust that leverages private market philanthropic and investor relationships to secure capital for transformative real estate development projects, which is much of what we're going to be talking about. And she has herself over 20 years of relevant experience overlooking her. At her, one would think that's impossible. It must be, it must be clean living, Janay, but we're happy to have both of you here. Now Irene, do you by chance have the slides? Because that may be an integral part of this presentation.
Let me see if I can pull them up, Irene.
Okay, thank you. We would appreciate that. And then when that happens, in either order that the two of you prefer, I invite you to move forward with your testimony. Thank you so much.
Great. And thank you Commissioners for inviting us to provide testimony today. I can share my screen if that's possible, if you'd like me to do that and might make it easier for driving. Oh, I can't.
You could do that. Irene, can you please make her a co-host?
Yes, one moment, please. Okay, we're all set.
Okay. Okay, can you all see that? Looks like that may be a, yeah.
No. It's loading, but it looks like it's getting there.
Yeah. It's green.
Okay. It's telling me it's paused on my end. So let me stop and see if I can do that again. Can you see that now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, terrific.
Thank you.
Great. Sometimes technology works in our favor. So again, appreciate the opportunity to present to you all today. It's nice to see some familiar faces as well as some new ones as well. My name is Ayana Kachoros. As Mark, Commissioner Lane said, I am the Senior Director for Policy and Advocacy at the trust. And I'm really pleased that my colleague Janay Defell can join us, could join me today in this presentation as she is truly the subject matter expert on this. But we thought it would be really important to kind of ground you all in why the trust is interested in this topic of community investment vehicles and how this feeds into our broader strategic vision at the community trust, which is the community foundation for the Chicago region, both the city and Cook County, and how important it is for us to be focusing our efforts on closing the racial and ethnic wealth gap. As you all know, this is part of a long-term strategic vision that has been set out by our leadership to really aim towards a thriving and equitable, connected Chicago region. And we're doing that in a variety of ways. And we really think about the strategy that we're pursuing as an integrated one that thinks both about individual wealth building opportunities, community wealth building opportunities at the neighborhood level and how we amplify and elevate community voice and at the same time address the sort of ongoing critical needs that we know exist in our communities and that we as a community foundation are here to serve and to really connect philanthropy to those opportunities where their philanthropic giving can make a difference in communities. Something that's new for us over the last couple of years is that we're really taking a much closer look at how we can use the voice and the platform that we have as the Chicago Community Trust, as a public charity, to advocate for those policies and systems changes that we know are going to be critical for us to address, to close the racial and ethnic wealth gap. Some of the policies that you all are well familiar with have brought us to the place we are today in the racial and ethnic wealth gap that we see. It's no more evident in inequities and homeownership rates and the wealth that families have through some of the policies at the early part of the 20th century and who was able to access home loans, SEFAJ loans, accessing the GI bill coming back from World War II. And those systemic inequities were built into the systems that we are still living with a legacy of those today. And so how we believe, without thinking about those longstanding barriers and structural issues, if we don't look at policy as a tool to get us out, we will just continually be working at the edges of the problem and not at the root causes. So we are ever more focused on how we can look to policy and systems change. And I think that's in alignment with the mission of this commission. So we appreciate the opportunity to share our perspective with you. I will just go on to talk a little bit more about some of the core strands to our work. We are really focused on individual wealth, growing household wealth, and that really cuts across a variety of different issues. It looks both at income, economic security, economic stability that families have. Without stable income, it's very difficult to build wealth. We look at the asset picture that folks have, whether it's owning a home or owning a small business. And we also look at what opportunities folks have to access capital and access that kind of capital in a way that's not extractive. So we know that there's a number of lending practices that we see in communities that disproportionately impact Black and Brown communities. We want to see those end. And, you know, even things like fines and fees that are, of course, that also disproportionately impact communities of color. So we really think about the full picture of wealth, not just one element of that equation. We're also looking at catalyzing neighborhood investment, and this is an area of work that the community desk is really squarely aligned with, which is how we catalyze neighborhood investment. How do we bring public sector investment, private capital to bear in investing in communities that have been disinvested and under-invested for too long? And we know that if, as communities are under-invested, it's very difficult for individuals living in those communities to also realize the wealth that can come from building assets in those communities. And then finally, our strand, our focus on building collective power, I mentioned earlier, really thinking about how do we amplify community voice and the perspective of community residents and those who are, have the most experience to bring to bear and how we design policy solutions and empower those organizations working in communities, grassroots organizers, local media organizations that are telling the stories of what's happening in the community, making sure those are part of and driving conversations around the policy and system changes we want to see. And all of these things, we believe, are critical to closing the racial and ethnic wealth gap, that if we allow the gap to continue and don't very intentionally think about this inequity, it's going to hold our entire region back. And so that's really what's animating all of our work. I wanted to spend a little, just a couple of moments on our approach to catalyzing neighborhood investment because I think it's really core to why community investment vehicles are part of this. And it's also kind of sits at the nexus of all three of the strategies that I mentioned. And the work that is being led by our colleague Michael Davidson, who is not, wasn't able to join us today. This, this work is his baby, but we often work very in close alignment. So hopefully I can do it justice. But he will be available for follow-up if anybody has questions. But the work around catalyzing neighborhood investment is really around how do we create the conditions for collaborative community investment, as I mentioned, that's sort of the need to bring multiple layers of capital to bear in communities? And how do we have those organizations, strong organizations based and rooted in community to make those solutions possible? And these are just some examples of the way that we do that, providing flexible funding to community-based organizations, helping support leaders in community and providing support for the kinds of collaboration that are required to make neighborhood investment come to fruition. We are also really focused on how we can help provide the space for collaboration around taking collective action around a specific place-based or issue-based plan. And then finally, the connection to policy and systems change, about how do we think about the financial systems and the policy solutions that help drive investment towards, into communities? And then lastly, I just wanted to say a couple of words about how the trust is showing up in policy and advocacy work and how we look at examples like community investment vehicles to help lead towards some of the policies that need to create the enabling environment for these solutions to actually have the impact that we want to see and the role that piloting and the role that philanthropy can play in helping to advance pilots and programmatic and develop programs and solutions to advance policy and systems change. So some of the work we're doing there is really around how do we create the environment to be more receptive for those policy ideas? So building knowledge and public will around some of the challenges in the case of this issue is how difficult some of the development challenges are in community. We're supporting research and publication, some of the exploration that Janay is going to walk you through and how that builds momentum towards policy and systems change. And we're also investing in the ecosystem of organizations who are doing this work. So it's grant support we're able to provide, but also investing in leaders who are doing the work. And then once we have identified these policy solutions, how can we advocate and use our voice and our platform to achieve policy solutions? And we've been very focused most recently on how can we help achieve an equitable and inclusive recovery as all of these federal dollars are flowing into our region? Where can we see and leverage those dollars as a potential for creating some of those systems changes we want to see? So Commissioner Naya, your comments earlier around the way that the county is innovating around the use of those dollars, it's exciting to see and we're very interested in those. Just sharing briefly, loosely calling a policy agenda, but these are some areas where we're really focusing our attention across the range of issues that we're working on at the trust. And I won't go into detail here, but the work that Janay is doing really kind of, and the work of the desk is really, kind of, we see is aligned with the work around vacant land and how we bring vacant land back to, you know, the asset that it really can be for communities and really invest in those vacant and underutilized properties in Black and Brown communities. And we hope that there's, there's only going to be more attention paid to this because of the federal resources and we hope we can help capitalize on that. So with that context, I just, I would really love to hand it over to my colleague Janay Defell, who, as I mentioned earlier, has really been spending the most of her time on this issue and is truly the expert on community investment vehicles. And this is, this is the meat of the, and the crux of what you want to hear about. But look forward to continuing the conversation with all of you. And with that, I'll hand it over to Janay.
Thank you. And thank you to everyone for allowing us to participate in today's session. Again, as mentioned previously, I am Janay Defell, Director of Community Desk Chicago. And I probably will date myself as I just briefly give you a little bit of context on my background. So I've worked for, both in the federal government perspective, sort of managing and making facility recommendations for the Office of Head Start, HHS. I've worked for 10 years at a CDFI, in particular, IFF, sort of working in community spaces and really sort of helping to address issues around facility access and management of real estate. And dating myself even earlier and saying that I used to work for Arthur Andersen, which no longer exists. So that might give you a little bit of perspective around my experience and date myself to a certain extent. So, you know, I really come to this work with a broad range of experience, from management consulting to sort of the municipal setting from Village of Oak Park, and as I mentioned, the federal government, but then also working at a CDFI where I've worked both in Chicago and in Detroit. And I was actually in Detroit, working at that CDFI right after they filed bankruptcy. So I saw a lot of similarities as I've come back to Chicago and some of the challenges that, that, that community faced when literally it was a city where the lights were shut off. And so I'm bringing a lot of sort of that working knowledge and some of the similarities to Chicago as we're thinking about ways to support communities in revitalization. And so Community Desk Chicago, as my colleague mentioned, we are a program affiliate of Chicago Community Trust. And so taking this position, really my role is to sit within the sort of philanthropic space and try to think about and work with my colleagues on creative ecosystem solutions to really address some of the issues that we're seeing in these communities. And one of the things that I can tell you nationally, and I think some of this is coming from the civil unrest, is that you're really seeing a spike across the country of where communities are taking investment and they're taking opportunities to revitalize into their own hands. And so they're doing a lot of capital pooling. They're joining their neighbors and raising money to buy properties and develop worker co-ops because they're seeing that existing systems have failed them. And so they're taking a much more grassroots bootstrap approach to how they are, they're changing their community. So we're seeing this more and more nationally. And so I definitely appreciate the compliments around subject matter expert. I will say that this space is fairly new. And as part of our research, which was funded by the Kresge Foundation last year, we looked at probably close to 20 models. And a number of those models were really in incubation stage. And the majority of them had really been operating less than five years. So again, this is a fairly new space. And we're really looking to think about ways to build that capacity within the city of Chicago. So let me talk a little bit about community investment vehicle. So often we use the term community wealth building models. And so, you know, quickly to put community investment vehicles into context, community wealth building sort of is a very broad word that could range from worker co-ops, where you've got, you know, a group of folks who are collectively working on a product or a solution and there's a shared ownership in that and that particular business. Worker co-ops have been around for a long time. We've got a ton of them in the city of Chicago and even worker co-ops to some degree. So these things have been, have been around. But what I can say that seems to be fairly new in various models, so you'll see here, you know, there's models from Kansas City to Portland. There's really been sort of a recent pivot to where you have residents who are literally taking ownership of commercial and residential properties and they are allowing residents to directly invest in those projects and those properties. And so we did about an eight months, eight-month study, really looking at, you know, what does it take to be successful in this space? And what is a CIV, which is a collective local ownership of commercial and real estate property? So essentially it is a legally governing body where there is dollars involved and folks are collectively pooling capital. And there's really sort of five areas. Ayana, if you could just pull it down just a second, which I'll talk you through fairly quickly. We found that there was five components that were very critical to this work. One of them is purpose and process. So who's involved? Who's leading it? The funding involved, the governance? What assets are they going to own? And then ultimately, the external stakeholders. So I do want to spend some time in the external stakeholder role because I think that's really where the county can play a significant role. So what is a community investment vehicle? Again, just quickly, it really is, it's about a way of giving community owners ownership over their properties, development, and their future. And so it could be focused on housing, it could be focused on commercial development, and then there's other creative investments. So we've seen structures get created where communities are lending money to businesses, right? So, so again, it's all about sort of that collective capital pooling where residents have a direct say in what's happening in their community. And then depending on the purpose of the model, there's generally been two purposes for these sort of community investment vehicles or sort of share ownership models. Those two are community stabilization and revitalization and/or community and individual wealth building. And the reason why I want to pause there for a second is because depending on what the objectives are for the community, each one of them could take a, a different path. So community stabilization and revitalization doesn't necessarily mean that there's cash directly provided to that family for investing in that particular property. It's more about how do we stabilize and have sort of a joint ownership of the community? The second one, the community and individual wealth building really is creating a structure or vehicle where these residents actually get paid dividends. So it's very important and what we learned in our research is, is very important to really work with community and give them that roadmap. So they're clear about what their North Star is because ultimately that North Star will impact their ability to really play a role in the wealth building. And again, depending on that legal and financial characteristics, they can take on very different, very different legal structures. So I think that you guys have been thinking about a trust. We've seen folks set up as benefit corporations, cooperative. So there's a number of different legal structures. And again, the output will really drive what that legal structure, how that legal structure is defined. Next slide, please. So again, as I briefly mentioned, these are all the components of a CIV. And just for the interest of time, I won't go through these in complete details. But again, you know, as you guys are thinking about the role and the strategy that you want to play in this space, I think it's really important to just spend a couple of minutes talking about all of these elements to make sure that communities are successful. So again, as I mentioned, purpose and process. What is the North Star of the CIV? Is it really about communities actually getting cash in hand? Or is it about turning the control over to communities to be able to do and have a say in how commercial properties are used to maintain affordable housing? Funding and investments. Are we talking about a fundraising from a community level? Are we going to allow for philanthropy investing? How could the county play a role in thinking about investing in these at, at the community level? And we'll talk a little bit about that. I mentioned legal and governance and assets and operations. So are we talking about housing projects? Are we talking about commercial projects? And then, as I've mentioned previously, external stakeholders. So we do know that municipal agencies like, you know, the county could play a critical role in the success of these CIVs. So I'm just going to highlight a couple of different sections in each one of these. So again, I think the most important as we're talking about purpose and process, I really can't stress enough is really as you're thinking about what role that the county would want to play in helping a community to roll out a CIV strategy is really understanding what is the intended purpose for that particular neighborhood or that, for that particular community. It's also important to really understand where the residents come into play. We all know that in, in, that in low income communities, there is often already a challenge of how they're managing their finances. So do they have bank accounts? And so when you start to talk about a community investment vehicle, there really needs to be a strategy around how are we engaging residents? How are we educating them on investments? So this list is sort of a real shortlist of, of, of the things that you need to consider as you're thinking about the purpose and process of, of a CIV and the potential role that the county could play. So for funding and investment, again, you know, for the real estate folks on the room, you know, you, you may have heard the word capital stack. And so essentially what this means is if a community is looking to buy five properties on a commercial corridor, how does that get paid? Right? How does that get funded? Is it funded in part because there is 50% of a, of a fundraising effort that happens at the community level? Is the county layering in with some bond financing? Like what does that capital stack look like? And ultimately, what does that return look like for the community? Income generation, right? So how do you want, how does the CIV make money? And if you are inviting outside investors to this sort of community wealth building model or CIV, are you going to prioritize that the community is going to get a larger return compared to some of our mission-driven investors? So again, this is just a quick checklist of all the things that would really need to be considered from a funding and investment standpoint. Next slide, please. Legal and governance. So as I mentioned very early on, you can see here from this rolling list. I mean, there are a ton of different legal structures that the community wealth building models or community investment vehicles can take. From benefit corporations to L3Cs to LLCs and ultimate even nonprofits. But as I alluded to earlier in my comments, you know, if you set up a community investment vehicle as a nonprofit, a nonprofit can't issue dividends. So this is why it's so important that as you're thinking about, as, as communities are thinking about, you know, these models, are they thinking about it in the context of what's their North Star? So is it, do you really want residents to actually get a dividend check at the end of the year? And if that question is yes, the nonprofit is not the legal structure. So we, we want to spend that time upfront in the purpose and process because then the legal structure is going to be so important. Compliance and governance, who's on the board? So even if you have mission-driven investors, does the community still drive the bus when it comes to the governance? And what does that look like? So again, this is just a checklist of some of the key things we found in the legal governance. Next slide, please. Assets and operations. So this is also important. And I think it also ties back to purpose and process. So, you know, if you have a community that's concerned about affordable housing, a community investment vehicle or a community wealth building model could be used to essentially acquire properties and maintain affordable housing in those communities. And you can also take that one level down and say, we're going to acquire the properties, we're going to offer affordable housing. And because we can actually model this to be somewhat profitable, the residents can actually make money from offering affordable housing. I mean, so there is a number of ways that you can look at this. Same thing for the commercial corridors. We often see, you know, in lower income of communities of color, various extract, extractive landlords and blighted properties on these corridors. And so is this an opportunity for residents? Which we're already seeing now, they're buying up these properties collectively together. And then they're in a much better position to control the type of retail and commercial space and how it's used to really activate their community and, and provide a different experience for the residents that live there. So this really just kind of talks about the property types and who's going to run it? Are you going to get a property manager? So we wanted to sort of scale this out as, as an understanding around assets and operations. So as we move to the next slide and talk a little bit about external stakeholders, I really think that this is the role and where there may be opportunities for the county to lean in. And so as I mentioned, you know, earlier, this study was really to look at in part, the role that philanthropy could play, but it was also intended to provide the roadmap for what this would look like in Chicago. And so there's been a lot of conversations with my philanthropic partners, including the trust, to lean in and think about ways that the, the foundations can support this work. And one of them being sort of supporting the early upfront planning through grant making. And there's also an opportunity for, for philanthropy to support this role through impact investing. We see that happening a lot. As well as sort of addressing policy and programming needs of the communities. But if we step into the role of philanthropy, of, of municipality and municipality agencies, there is a role for you all to play. And some of the things here, you, that we could sort of talk through a little bit. One of them is being, you know, in communities, you can have a community plan, but if you don't have access to the properties and you don't control the properties, that's also very challenging. So municipalities could play a role in really sort of streamlining access to some of these offline properties or assets that the, that the county owns to allow these organizations to begin to build their wealth building model around properties that are easily accessible. Tax abatement. So again, as we're thinking about trying to support these communities and creating these models, they have to be financially feasible. And so, you know, supporting through tax abatements is, is often, you know, a good way to sort of help to, to, to jumpstart their investments and sort of help them to build a reserve because there's, there's an opportunity to build up their assets over time. Long-term debt through bond financing or other specialized financing. So the other thing that we know, you know, for the, for the financial folks or the bankers on the call is that commercial loans are often five to seven years and you have to refinance them. So is there an opportunity for bond financing or some long-term debt to really sort of support these projects? Because you know, one thing that's different about community wealth building models or community ownership models compared to if this was a for-profit, they're not providing education trainings for residents to be able to invest. So there is an additional layer of cost that comes when you want to make a more inclusive model compared to this being sort of a private banker approach to this work. So having more long-term and favorable debt financing definitely helps to make, to make things work. Municipal and city subsidies. So again, you know, as, as, as they are thinking about potentially buying properties, are, is there funding to help with the repairs if it's housing? Or is there funding available to support, you know, the renovation of the storefronts and put up new signage? So those sort of city subsidies will work. Fast tracking permitting and municipal approvals. You know, as we all know, time is money. So are there, these are also ways of sort of cutting the costs on these projects and making them a more financially viable, but also literally contributing to a potential wealth building opportunity for residents. And then also enforce the sale and improvement of blighted properties. I mean, this is a huge issue as we think about the South and the West Side communities that are, that are, that are saturated with, with blighted properties. So, so this is just sort of an example of some of the things that, you know, from an external stakeholder perspective would be truly beneficial. And so, you know, just wanted to give you a bit of a soundbite in terms of the role that a municipal agency can play. So quickly, you know, just to kind of model this out, I want to just jump down just so to give you a little bit of a visual chart i- in terms of how does this all come together? And so essentially you, you heard me, if you look at the top part of this diagram, you heard me talk about purpose and process, funding and investment, legal governance, assets and operations. These are all components that ultimately need to feed into that CIV structure that gets defined. And these things need to be taken seriously because ultimately that impacts the types of projects that the CIV can invest in and ultimately the impact that they want. So a CIV, once it's properly structured, and again, we're looking at this from a, from a real estate perspective, not as a worker co-op. The CIV could be a pool of capital, let's just say $10 million. And that's CIV, which could have $10 million in it and maybe 500 residents investing in it. They have the ability at that point to purchase properties solely owned by the CIV. So that's bucket number one. Bucket number two could be the CIV, which we often hear a lot as well in communities where you have private developers coming into the communities and the communities don't have an option to be an equity partner in these developments. The CIV could also take a portion of that capital and be a partner with private developers. That's also an opportunity for those communities to, to make, to make a, a, a dividend. And then thirdly, I talked a little bit about, there are some creative models where you have these community wealth building structures lending to each other. And so depending on the path that that CIV takes, the impact could be a number of things from building and circulating community wealth. So you're actually making money. It could be more empowerment because now the community owns the assets. Or it could be truly just community stabilization. We just want to occupy the properties in a trust. And we know that this will be something that will remain in the community, you know, ongoing through, through a trust structure. So there's a different, number of different paths that the CIV can take. So I think we should be coming up on the last few slides. Want to just keep going. And so briefly, this is just a, a, a quick recap of what we captured during our research. So it was very clear when we talked to residents during our work that communities want control and they want maximum control. It was also very apparent that communities were very interested in direct wealth opportunities and wealth opportunities, meaning they're getting dividends, their assets are appreciating. And then also is there an opportunity to keep the money in the community and create the circular economy? And then finally, opportunity, you know, so they want to be in a position where they themselves can acquire the necessary capital and rapidly respond and compete with private market cash buyers as they're thinking about how to revitalize their community. Next slide. So from a community readiness perspective, you know, this is the things that we know are, are really sort of as we think about this work from a, from a trust perspective and a desk perspective is that there, you know, for this to be successful and whether or not it's, is, is something that's viable in communities is that they really do have to have a common share ownership goal. Like what is the desire for the community? What are the wealth building opportunities? So again, what, what are they looking to accomplish in structuring a community wealth building model? And then the other one that we know seems to be very common is, is there an at-risk affordability? So if there's really an issue where they're concerned about, you know, the stability and gentrification of their neighborhoods, this is also maybe a good tool for community. And then really to launch this from a real estate perspective, you know, not thinking about some of the other shared ownership models, is that you really have to have a very strong community lead. And at the end of the day, you have to have properties that's, that's available for them to acquire. So again, this is also, as I mentioned earlier, an opportunity for the county to potentially play, you know, a very critical role in, in providing sort of that first access to properties to help them build out what, what could be a community investment vehicle. So this is, can be a fairly complicated topic, but wanted to be respectful of your time. We probably have about 60 more pages of documentation that we can share, but wanted to sort of give you a quick soundbite and not necessarily put you to sleep. So with love and welcome any questions or follow-up from our presentation today, we're, we're happy to, to answer any questions.
Well, thanks very much to both of you. And the more you talk, the more excited we get. So you're hardly putting us to sleep. This is, this is what we're all about. And thank you for, to both of you for everything you do. Couple of observations, and then I'd like to turn this over to the commissioners for the questions they may have. One is yes, by all means, if you would kindly share with us any materials that are available to us. So as to fully inform us. And, and thank you for your, your insights and your research findings. Also, thank you. The, the trust, trust has in fact committed to work collaboratively with the commission in driving these sorts of agendas. So thanks to both of you. Thanks also to Mike Davidson, who, as many of you may know, is a senior director of community impacted the trust who leads much of this effort. And we will certainly look to collaborate with the trust as we move forward. But let me open this up to questions and I might have a couple of my own, but let's, let's see who has what questions. And I know a couple of questions were raised even during the course of the testimony. So let me kind of take you by sequence. Who, 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 who had asked a question? We're seeking to ask a question, please.
There's two people with their hands up, Commissioner Wajardo and Commissioner Malone. And then we can go over the ones that were in the chat.
Okay. So why don't we take it in that order if we would, please?
Hey, thank you so much. This is Anna Wajardo with Centro de Trabajadores Nuevos, United Workers Center in the Southeastern Chicago. CCT, thank you for all the support for the organization in terms of our community work. We, along with actually Solcheed and Roger, have been involved in different efforts to pass state legislation to recognize worker co-ops. In addition to try to work with the city of Chicago and the county also to pass the resolution recognizing worker co-ops. I'm trying to understand how CIV actually plays, like what role it plays with a worker co-op? Very familiar with worker co-ops. I'm just not fully understanding how that could be seen as a worker co-op. And, and then I have probably a lot of follow-up questions, but I might as well ask them. Just assuming that maybe it is kind of like the worker co-op model. Then who would oversee that? Like what role would the county be in? How do we ensure that the county plays an instrumental role, but doesn't have full control of decisions, right? Or like how, what type of funding will be provided? Because for worker co-ops, like as you mentioned, there's a lot of support that needs to, you know, a lot of support that workers and worker co-ops need in terms of financial assistance. Um, they, you know, we have one co-op where we had to break it down, how to even go into your bank account, right? And how to even open up a Gmail account, right? Or not Gmail, uh, email account. So I'm just running like, one is, you know, and is this like, kind of like a, a housing co-op maybe? And if so, how does that actually play with? So that, I'm sure you get it, like.
So great question. And so, and thank you for lifting it up because this is a very complex topic and you're sort of trying to cram it into a 20-minute presentation. So worker co-ops, housing co-ops and community investment vehicles are all community wealth building, a community wealth building model. So for a worker co-op, you're investing in a business. Is that correct? Is my understanding, so you're investing in a business? So with that worker co-op, you could be in a rental space. You could be running your co-op in a rental space. With the community investment vehicle, you are investing in real estate. So it's not necessarily investing in a business. So it's not necessarily investing in a business. So that's the difference. In some cases, wealth building models are investments in businesses. In some cases, they're investment in housing, which is a real estate component. In other cases, they're investments in commercial property. So for example, one of the models that I believe you guys were looking at was the Portland um Community Investment Trust. And so this team led by Mercy, uh Mercy Corporation actually acquired a shopping center. And for that acquisition of the shopping center, residents were allowed to basically come in as a shareholder that would gain profits from the profitability of that shopping center. So that's not a worker co-op. It is an investment in real estate. And so, but all of these are different examples of wealth building models where essentially you are collectively pooling resources for a wealth building opportunity. Um, and so you're also correct in saying similar to worker co-ops, there does need to be a whole body of body of work around how do you prepare residents to start investing in real estate? Right? Because if they if they are renter, they rent their current a current apartment. Um, you know, what do they, they may not have experience in now becoming a shareholder in the acquisition of a shopping center. So you do have to educate them. So the model in Portland, they have a whole financial literacy curriculum set up. And so as part of our analysis, we looked at what would it cost to do that? And so that was the role um that community that the philanthropy could play. So when we were talking to community um trusts, the Chicago Community Trust, they could play a role in the grant making side to build out that community engagement component and educate residents on how they invest. So I hope that sort of helps to put things in in context.
I just have a quick follow up. So I understand what you're saying in terms of the investment. Um, like when we incubate worker co-ops, you know, obviously anyone who wants to form a co-op can do it themselves, you know, but some of us actually, you know, use that as an opportunity to teach folks. Unless people are are knowledgeable or are able to find these resources, I guess I'm not understanding like unless unless you just provide that information, is there a particular entity that's also incubating these type of C I Bs? And who are they?
That's correct. So to my working knowledge, again, as I mentioned, this is this is a fairly new topic. There is no C I V incubator in Chicago, right? What I have seen nationally is there have been organizations that have been supported by professionals to build out their C I V model. So you have the Port, like I said, the Portland uh Community Investment Trust, you have the Kensington Trust. I mean, there's probably twenty different models. But they're not all connected. I mean, essentially it is a group of residents, um and in some cases nonprofits who have built out these models. And so where, so so when you build out the model, you create the governance structure. So similar to your worker co-op, there's a governance structure to get set up in this investment vehicle. And that governance structure is gonna is really gonna drive who gets the profits, where does the profits go, what buildings are you buying? The level of education that is residents are coming in. Uh, one of the interesting components about the um the model in Portland is they have a they have a return guarantee for the residents. So if they invest in that commercial strip mall, they're guaranteed they have a relationship with the local bank where they're guaranteed that that resident decided that they wanted their money back. They were guaranteed to get a two percent return. But these are all things that individually gets built out on a C I V basis, based off of the legal structure and the objectives of what they're looking to do. Does that provide some additional clarification?
It does, but if I'm correct, maybe Solcheed Roger can help me. What you just mentioned seems like a consumer co-op, not a worker co-op.
It's not a worker co-op.
Oh, okay. I see.
This is so it's this is not, this is not a work, a worker co-op is a direct investment in a business. Community investment vehicles from our point of view is is an investment in real estate. So you're investing in housing, you're investing in in commercial strip malls. You're investing in, you know, retail corridors, you know, on the South and the West Side or North Side suburbs, um but it's not investing directly in the business. So that would be a correct statement.
Hi, um, this is Suchile, uh Suchile Espinosa. I just wanna, um, I think this is the way I'm understanding Anna, um. I think it's just semantics because we use different terms in different spaces about, you know, in the city of Chicago, I just I put a um a message how that we're calling it community wealth building, right? Um, we in our in certain spaces, we call it restorative economy, solidarity economy, might be a little radical for certain spaces, but it's the same thing. It's basically um what it comes down to is like, you know, no matter what institution or organizations you're building, what you're building is um where the 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 question is like, who actually has the control? And the control should be either the workers, that's a worker co-op. If it's a consumer, the consumer have the co-op. If it's, you know, some sort of community fund, the residents have the the control. So really it's just the asking the question like who would who would have the control to run or, you know, of of this institution? Then that's the question. And so I think that should clarify, like it's more of like a little bit, it's not just about worker co-ops, it's a whole about the whole vision about um community wealth building. And I think that's what you're referring to.
Yeah, that that's absolutely correct. I mean, I I think all of the those community, the C I V, the um, the worker co-op, the housing co-ops, these are all things that sit under the community wealth building umbrella. And you're absolutely correct in the sense that is really about is is this an investment? Uh, or is this a collaborative that is controlled and owned by the community? Absolutely. And we are actually working closely with the city. Um, we've been very involved with um a lot of their work this past summer. And we had representatives from the city um as part of our our research group um this this past summer to make sure that we were aligned and in sync with with some of the the efforts happening right now across the city. Thank you for for sharing that.
Other questions?
So Commissioner Malone, Commissioner Dubois, and then I'll pull up the ones from the chat. There's been quite a lot of conversation happening there.
Okay, Commissioner Malone, if you'd be so kind.
Hi, everyone. Thank you guys so much for coming. Uh, we I really enjoyed your presentation. Um, my name is Morgan. I work at Farpoint. I manage Bronzeville Lakefront. And so we have actually also been talking a lot about community wealth building and community ownership. And you guys kind of answered one of my questions. I was gonna say, are there samples of how this has already been done in the city of Chicago? Because we're, I mean, it's it's kind of one thing to do it on like a twenty thousand square foot building in a community that's an adaptive reuse versus trying to do it on twelve million square feet of new construction. Um, and it's just different costs and different model. And one of the things I would ask you all is, have you seen this work with a large scale G P for like a district, right? Because we know that things of this scale have the ability to completely transform a neighborhood, right? Like it twelve hundred acres is a lot of space. So when you start thinking about that and you know that a big G P or big L P is gonna come in and do a sizable percentage um and have very clear um thoughts about who gets to invest alongside and how many small investors they're willing to take on, et cetera, et cetera. You get into the nuance and the weeds of like how to make something like this happen. So I would, I guess I would ask you, are there district scale samples of a C I V? Um, I know Navy Arts has committed about five percent of equity per building, uh but I don't, I'm not clear on their model. So I just wanted to ask that if you have any references.
So Yana, could you pull up that diagram for me again? Um, so so I guess I would to respond to your question, it is not my, to my knowledge right now, I am not aware of a model in the city of Chicago where there has been a community investment vehicle structured at the community level that is allowing for an open investment across the community. What we have seen is a number of developers are using crowdfunding platforms to raise capital for projects. And so, yeah, this one here. So what we're trying to do is to figure out and work with community to build at the ground level, capital pooling to be in a position to invest in your project. So let me give you in a scenario. If I understand you correctly, your model will fall in bucket number two, property owned in partnership. So a lot of times what developers are doing is they are, they're doing these projects and then they're saying, we have a ten million dollar gap to complete this real estate project and they're crowdfunding through a platform to allow for communities to make an investment. And what we're proposing is in these communities to have communities ready with capital in a community investment structure that when you come into their neighborhood, they're in a better position to negotiate and say, okay, we want a five percent equity stake in this large scale developer development and we can come with our portion of the developer equity to be a critical stakeholder in the project. Um, so that is kind of how we're viewing it. Uh, but to my working knowledge, there's not, there has not been a large scale project of that magnitude done in Chicago. And I will tell you that most of the models that we looked at um were very focused um at the community level, meaning they were community dri- driven and not necessarily developer driven.
And then if there was one more slide that you all had like right above here that said what the possibilities for the municipals were, and I just also wanted to ask a little bit about, um, I think, you know, between with the work of the assessors office. Um, and I know there's some really amazing policy folks over there who are open to having conversations about community wealth building, and this has been a bit of a priority for them over the last couple of years. Um, I would ask about the bond finance, bond financing. And and I'm asking about that because I, um, you know, I'm probably a person that would say that the city, the county and the state have too many bonds, um, which obviously has a direct impact on the property taxes that people are paying um to finance these bonds. So have you all, um, and obviously there are other things you can do besides G O bonds. But what types of bond financing are you seeing? Are you seeing social impact bonds? What types of bond financing are you seeing in the context of supporting long term debt? Just thinking about G O bond potentially being challenging.
Yeah, I mean, having come from a work in the municipal setting, it is tricky, right? When you start to talk about bond bond financing, um. So so I can't say that we have any examples here in the city. I think part of part of what we're looking, I I think is we're having this discussion with you and thinking about conversations with the city and even at the state level. Um, is thinking through, uh, which is why you'll see sort of special specialized financing. I think the goal um in this bullet point is to really figure out, are there capital strategies that the municipal agencies can lean in on that allows for more flexible capital? Because again, as you probably know, commercial financing, you know, is five to five to seven years, it's a twenty five seventy five loan value. And so, um, you know, this is really sort of a placeholder to think about, are there strategies as you're leveraging um your ability to to create these types of uh products that it will offer, you know, sort of a longer term uh payback with a little bit less of a requirement on the equity side? Because that that's always a challenge. Um, but we don't actually have any uh models that we looked at that actually engaged um municipalities. And again, I can't stress enough that majority of these folks, um, these these um groups are are very early um in their process. And I see, um, glad you pointed out the Yujima uh community investment model because we actually did talk to those folks. And that's an example. I'm looking at the chat. That's an example of where an agency is doing direct lending um to small businesses in um in their um in their community, but they're not doing real estate because of the 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 high cost that it takes to really do a project. They're they're mostly um small business related. Uh, so that was really the point of this context, but we're not aware of any model that's used that. Most of the agencies that we've talked to have used um program related investments or P R I's because they do offer zero to three um, three to three percent interest and is usually a little bit more flexible than traditional debt financing. So the question would be, at this point in time for the county, is this a feasible solution?
Any other questions?
Commissioner Dubois.
Yeah, um, thank you. This was really a great presentation. Just would be interesting to hear if there's a couple of C I Bs or a couple of like initiatives underway in a couple of the neighborhoods that, you know, you're really excited about. You know, just a couple of things that you think are pretty groundbreaking right now and where they're going on.
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm I'm a little hesitant to to get into too much of the details because I know this is a public meeting. But what I can say is, um, there was a, you you follow the crane, there was a um a there were residents in the South Shore community that um recently acquired property. It was probably this past summer that they actually acquired. So the the residents in the in the Highlands um a- association that just in South Shore literally collectively pooled together their properties and acquired funding and acquired a property that was in receivership. And so they are now sort of formally organizing um their efforts to continue that work um throughout South Shore. So it was an article actually in the in the Chicago, um, I think it was in Block Club Chicago, it was in Chicago, uh, Chicago, um Cranes, the Cranes magazine. So so that's one example. Um, another example, another good example in Inglewood is E G Wood. So E G Wood is another example in Inglewood where they have, um, there's a, there's a little bit of a funky model in the fact that they actually invest in both real estate and the business. So it is an opportunity for, if you are a um business in the particular um building, you can invest in in their sort of co-op, their real estate co-op, if you will. Um, that's an example. But we're also seeing um a number of folks throughout the community that are using or trying to leverage community ownership models, again, as I've mentioned before, to revitalize the commercial corridor. So we're seeing quite a bit in that space. Um, we're also starting to see um some traction in neighborhoods like Garfield Park where their laser focus on housing um that's impacting um through two to three flat, three unit flats. So that's an issue in Garfield Park is that there is a concern around, you know, the fact that the conversion of these two to four unit flats being converted into single family homes. So we're starting to see some traction, some traction there. So so I would just say that there is energy and movement of around the city as a whole. But I really can't stress enough that um aside from worker co-ops, which we know exist and housing co-ops, which we know have existed, this is really a new space in the city. Um, and I think that there is a lot of excitement and momentum with the 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 city of Chicago is investing fifteen million dollars in this space around community wealth building. So we're just seeing a lot of more momentum than we've ever saw in this space.
Thank you. Are there other questions?
Hi, I've got my hand up, Mark.
Please, older woman, you're you're on.
Fantastic. Um, uh, this is a really great uh presentation, so thank you all for that. Um, I'll I'll say in my city of Chicago hat, um, this is maybe a follow up uh question to to Wendy. Um, who are you working with in the city of Chicago? I know we've had some conversations and I believe I'm still waiting to hear back from the trust uh directly to the office of the forty ninth ward. Um, but wondering, um, as you guys have been working and compiling this, what does your relationship look like in some of these projects with local government? Um, so whether it be the city or the county, or what do you see your role being in working with local government? And this within context is, you know, we're trying to work in this space, right, in the forty ninth ward and as community members or electeds or organizations are looking to start this up, um, certainly um, as there are, these are kind of new combinations, I agree with you, right? Of, you know, not just modeling some of the um cooperative structures we've seen, but trying to adapt them or grow them or innovate them. So there certainly seems to be a bit of a um, a gap in in some expert advising. So I know that's while how we reached out to you guys. Is that what your role is going to be?
Great question. And I'm actually happy to see you on the call because we have been talking about your project internally. So, um, it is, it is definitely in our queue. Um, I, you know, I think your question is 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 a valid one, um, which is the reason why I I am being very transparent in saying that, you know, I have not found any experts in the city of Chicago, right? Because ultimately we've got to have these sort of models actually implemented. And even the folks who have nationally been doing this work are very careful to say that they're experts because in some cases, they're still working through the proof of concept. Um, and in fact, Nico was the first public, was the first privately placed REIT, real estate investment trust. And we actually just saw in the news recently that they are stopping, there's no longer an investment opportunity into Nico. there's no longer an investment opportunity into NICO. Um, and um, they're selling the assets. Now, I could probably dissect what went wrong in that particular model. Um, but we, you know, that would probably be for a different time and date. Uh, but then you have folks like, again, the Portland model, which, which did very well during COVID times. Um, because communities had an investment in those, those shops. So they were, they were careful and concerned about making sure that the door stayed open and the lights turned on. So what is our role? Um, I think that's a great question, you know? And so, as I mentioned, this research was initially done through the lens of philanthropy and their affiliates like myself. And so, um, you know, Yana, feel free to jump in here. But I think, you know, the trust is right now, you know, evaluating how they can lean in and support communities. So are there opportunities to support them through a grant-making process to carefully go through these steps? So one of the things you did not see today is, we actually have a full implementation plan that literally could walk a community through the considerations and the steps on how to do a community investment vehicle. And this has all been done in part because we've looked at so many models for eight months. Um, so there's an opportunity for, you know, the trust to play a role there. Um, there's also opportunities again to think about can philanthropy, and I'm just speaking broadly, um, even with some of the other philanthropic partners that was involved in the research to actually do direct impact investing. So as I mentioned before, when I talked about bond financing, again, P R I's or program-related investments and other um, philanthropic investments, mission-driven investments could also help to make these models more financially feasible, especially when equity and equity raises an issue. Um, the role that we plan to play at the desk is to continue to, one, advocate for these types of tools, which is what we're doing now and, and, and helping, you know, um, policymakers and, and funders to really understand the importance and the impact of this. But we also do plan to um, play a supportive role in helping communities to build out these models. So I do know, um, I'm on the um, City of Chicago's Wealth Building Working Committee, Working Group. So I am actively involved with the mayor's office and staying connected to that and do plan to play an active role, my team, to really sort of help to build out some of these models um, across the city. And in fact, we are working within a few neighborhoods right now. Um, and then we've maintained connections with a number of the models that we've seen across the city, the country. And some of those folks are actually very interested in coming into Chicago to build the capacity. Um, so we have not created a work plan to date. I think this is sort of the first start of us on our roadshow, if you will, to really sort of build momentum in this space. I was actually very happy, um, because I spoke to um, Commissioner Wendy and Com- uh, Commissioner Christine earlier to this week, uh, just to talk about this work. And so I think the timing was great when, when we also talked to, to Commissioner Mark about, about us coming to speak with you today. Um, so your project is very much on our radar. Um, and we look forward to continuing to have conversations with you about how we can support, support the work in your war. But I think one of the things that's very important, which you noted in my presentation, is having a community lead is going to be critical and having a site or properties. Because that's where you get started, especially if you're looking at this from a real estate investment perspective.
Thank you.
And, and Janay, if I could just add, I think, you know, we at the trust have, because of the great work that Janay and, and has done over the last year really to build out this body of knowledge and research and examples. You know, we, there's sort of a, a recognition that we have at the trust that this is really touches on, on so many different aspects of the way that we work at the trust and have sort of elevated C I Vs as a really important cross-strategy initiative at the trust and really starting to organize ourselves internally around, how do we think about what tools we have to bring to bear on this? So the point around impact investing, the capacity building we can help do with those community partners, um, really thinking about what are the, the policy levers and the, the resource opportunities? Um, and so we, in, in many ways, we have been working on this for a really long time, but we're still at a new space um, of how we approach this and how we, um, what is our role in kind of helping that facilitate that? But we think this is a really important opportunity and we're really excited that the commission was um, eager to hear from us on this. So we, we do hope to figure out what's the right next step um, with you all.
Is there another question?
Yeah, I, just a quick question. So, um, this is more for the county, but I know Commissioner Maya stepped up. But I'm just wondering, what role can the, what, like, what bigger role can the county play when it comes to purchasing of properties?
Yeah, there, there, there are those opportunities and we're going to be exploring them. And thank you for that question. I, I'd like to throw out a couple of questions of my own. And uh, much of what I was going to ask about has already been asked and answered. So I won't be uh, repetitive. And I, and uh, Janay, I believe the two of the Chicago-based uh, projects that you've identified happen to be clients of our firm, where we put those together. And I can, I can um, concur that uh, you don't get locked into pre-existing patterns or models. This is, this really invites creativity and uh, combinations of different strategies. Uh, obviously you've alluded to the fact that these will typically have a tranch capital structure. You want to identify necessary desirable stakeholders. You have to create financial and social value propositions for each of them to ensure their buy-in. So, but all those things kind of are in the social enterprise world anyway. But let me, I, I kind of uh, establish as a foundation for one of the things I wanted to ask. And this is really for either of you, if you'd be so kind. Uh, one, there's been some reference to um, community lead. And I think there was a specific mention of the um, county having uh, uh, potentially a role in providing first access to properties. Um, and I don't know if you're talking about the land bank. I'm not sure exactly what you're talking about there. But let me kind of combine both of those questions and ask you as directly as I can. Wh- wh- where do you see, uh, and we're going to unfold our own process as a commission, but just from the perspective of your own experience, um, wh- where do you see the optimal role the county might play uh, in, in not only doing this on a one-off basis, but really catalyzing this kind of a strategy more broadly, where there can be opportunities for scale and rollout? And where uh, what we do here in Cook County becomes a model that can be, uh, that can be replicated or tweaked and replicated in other communities around the country? Where, where, where do you see our highest and best use in this kind of an initiative as a, as a county?
Yeah, I mean, so I think that's a great question. So let me just go back to the community lead. Uh, so the reference to the community lead is, when you're talking about a grassroots resident-led effort, you've got to rally the troops, right? So I use an example of, you know, the article that was published around uh, the community that the folks that, um, that purchased what they're calling a Bennett Bennett Place, which is essentially a neighborhood association in a community within South Shore, that their resident association, they had a meeting, they have an economic development meeting, community um, committee, and they got together and say, hey, this building is blighted. It's on receivership, let's get together and pool our money. So when you're talking about from a community perspective, somebody has to rally the troops. So that's the reason why it's very important um, to have a community lead because ultimately...
Does it, does it mean a champion or does it mean more than a champion?
Um, yeah, I mean, so I, I think that, I mean, this is a little bit of a, sort of a wordsmith thing at some point because i- it's a champion, but it, but somebody has to sort of take the charge, right?
Yeah, okay.
But it doesn't necessarily mean that that person has to be the expert, right? Because what we recognize is, you're, I mean, you're in this space, you hire experts to help you. But the community, you need to get the community buy-in and generally that comes at the community level. So that's the reason why we're calling...
And when you say the community level, are we talking about neighborhoods? Are we talking about a city? Are we talking about a county? What do you mean by the community level?
That, that's a gr- that's a very great question. I think it depends on your perspective. So we've had, there have been conversations even in our study of are we thinking that C I V should be at a citywide level, a county level or, or at a neighborhood level, right?
Yes.
And so, to respond to you and answer that question, it depends on the North Star. So remember, I go back to purpose and process. So if, if you are looking for an opportunity to create wealth-building opportunities regardless broadly at the county level, then it can be at the county, right? Because you're looking...
Let's suppose, given that that's the mandate of this commission, let's suppose for a moment that that's what we would seek to do. Uh, so what, what would be our optimal role i- as the agency that incubates actionable social policy recommendations for the county board? How, how should we frame this for the county board? What would, what would the ask be of the county board? What resources would, might be deployed, for what purposes? What role, you know, i- i- if you could flesh that out? And I understand this is a work in progress, but...
Yeah, no, no, I, I understand.
From where you're, where you're at right now, where you, the perch on which you sit, how would you think about that?
So, so I understand that. And so I, I have to take it from my lens, right? And so my, my priority is, how are we improving the quality of life for community? So even though you're sitting at the county level, you're representing a wide variety of residents.
Right.
So I would be looking to put my tools and resources uh, that will have a direct impact on the ground within the neighborhoods of which you serve. So, uh, which is why I'm saying, I would want to put that, I would want to support at the ground level, community level, community-led, supporting those residents in Harvey or in South Highland or other places
Yeah.
where, where they're dealing with significant blight and change in sort of the, 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 um, and change in terms of their economic dynamic, how, how can we support them?
Okay, let me, let me build on what you're just saying. This may be my last question. I might reserve the right to ask one more. But in light of what you've just said, uh, it was, it was indicated that there is no C I V uh, incubator in Chicago.
And it doesn't necessarily need to be, right? Because I think what we, and I'm not saying we can't have that, but, but what I am saying is, the models across the country that we look at were not, they were not incubating C I Vs. They were individual investment opportunities and models, right?
But, but what I'm getting at is, uh, no, I understand that, and each is sui generis. I, I get that too.
Correct, correct.
But, but when we talk about the county stepping up and really empowering the neighborhoods, which is kind of the way I would put what you said into my language.
Yep, yep.
Uh, m- might you think that establishing a county-funded or sponsored incubator for this purpose, uh, really empowering nonprofits or social enterprises or foundations or co-ops or others that see this as a logical extension of their respective missions and way to drive positive social change? Would you see that? And I'm not trying to plant a seed here.
No, that, that's fine.
It's something that you think might fit in the mix? Or do you think that that is, is, is not the best of all possible ideas?
Right, so, so if you ask me a question about highest and best use of county, right? So we've, we, we know that there has to be some serious training and scaling of communities to do this work, right?
Yeah.
So I think we're using the word uh, incubator. But ultimately, it is, how do we scale this concept and provide opportunities across the city? But I'm a firm believer that, as we look at each one of these individual stakeholders, that the best option is to leverage what you, what your maximum asset is. So again, if the county doesn't necessarily have properties, that may not be your direction. If there is any opportunity again for low-cost capital, because if, if I think about a lot of the struggles that these um, organizations have, it literally is access to capital. It is access to the properties. So if I had to think about the highest and best use of the county, these are things that you all could potentially control. Like you all could potentially control tax abatements, like a, an, a philanthropic partner couldn't do that. So I would just, I would strongly recommend leaning toward your assets and your strengths as a municipal agency to support this infrastructure. Because I think from an incubation standpoint, that could be stood up from, uh, from a nonprofit perspective, from philanthropy perspective. But there are things that you as a government can control that your other stakeholders can't.
The, 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 the commission has really distinguished itself uh, as a convener, as a collaborator, as a catalyst. So there are a lot of different hats we can wear in order to drive change. But I, I very much, and I'm going to ask you one other question, and this is kind of...
Sure.
This is the loaded question, okay? So, um, for, you're forewarned. Um, from the trust perspective, uh, if we look at these various entities, designs, approaches, strategies, um, uh, if the trust were to look at these, a- and I know the trust does on a one-off basis, um, and, and, and somebody or some organization were to raise its hand and seek support of the trust, whether that be P R I's, as you mentioned, or grants, or mission-related investments, or technical assistance, or, or a planning grant, or whatever, whatever the heck it might be. Uh, would, would you be looking at this through the same lens that the trust looks at other funding and relationship opportunities in terms of, of the quality of management, the, the mission, the history, the theory of social change, the likelihood of uh, of s- uh, social returns and so on? Would, would the, would the same kind of criteria apply here? Or given your perception that this is, is new and innovative and disruptive, are there additional guardrails that the trust would impose on, I mean, uh, collaborations with such ventures, should they surface and seek to work with the trust?
Yeah, so I, I, yeah, I could, I can grab that. Um, in part because as, as Yana mentioned, I work very closely with Mike Davison and catalyzing neighborhood investment. And what I can tell you is, we left this research with the call, a very specific call to action to philanthropy. And so we are already, there are already three, I think potentially three um, groups, including the Alderman's group, if, if she's still on the call, I don't see her on the screen. We are actually already inventory potential projects that we could lean in and support. Um, and, and he would probably say, if he was on this call, it's like philanthropy can take risks. So we are looking at this, and I think it's very much in line with the trust in terms of catalyzing neighborhood investments. Because again, we, we, we're looking to put the control of these communities in the hands of the community and provide direct wealth-building opportunities. So, so it, it's a different sort of product. Um, but, but we're very much ahead on the grant-making. But the other thing I just want to clarify for the record is that, um, the, the Chicago Community Trust is not a private foundation, so they don't actually have P R I's. That's really more of a privacy, right? So they would be looking at how to leverage donor-advised funds. So I just want to make sure that folks understand that.
But, but I, I see this, I see this as a co-investment opportunity. You know, I think if the trust comes in, the trust isn't likely to go in alone, I assume. So therefore, I, I talk about P R I's, M R I's, other players that may um, be motivated by virtue of the, the trust leadership, uh, and even kind of thinking through the, what the diligence requirements are, expenditure responsibility and so on. And the trust obviously has, has a, a big footprint and others will follow its lead. So that's, that's why I expanded this more broadly.
Yeah, no, and if I could just add, um, Commissioner and, and Janay, and this was a really great conversation, very nitty-gritty. I think one of the things that we see our role, as, as Janay said, is about how we can take risk. But in all things that we've been doing and, and um, across the, the range of things that the trust is invested, is that we know that we can't do anything on our own. But it's, it all has to be done in partnership and we all need to be leveraging our strengths. And certainly, as Janay said, the county has certain um, uh, assets to bring to bear on this. We in philanthropy have a certain um, uh, set of assets to bring to bear. And I think what is so critical about the community investment vehicle model, it really is centering community in a way. And so the idea that, you know, there is no one-size-fits-all approach, and it's really thinking about what is happening in each community and what are those opportunities there? Who are the actors, who are the players? So in, in essence, it feels like that it, for this particular vehicle and this, this approach, having a county-wide incubator or county-wide function isn't necessarily in the spirit of what community investment vehicles are about. It's very much about what's happening in the community and what the community, how the community sees the investment vehicles addressing a particular need that they have.
Very helpful. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Great, so just, sorry, I just wanted to add that it sounds like the clear pathway for the commission to get involved is barrier reduction, barrier removal policy, to be able to enact the ability for people to engage with this. It's not necessarily a funding mechanism, it's not necessarily a program or an institution as much as it is, okay, we know we may need tax abatements. So can we work with the assessor's office to come up with a policy to redo, to create a tax incentive for community investment vehicles and co-ops?
Yeah.
Oh, one second, Mark, sorry. Um, or can we work with the county land bank? Or can we work with one of those organizations to come up with a policy um, that will support people's access to these homes, access to these properties, access to financing, or access to incentives to reduce costs? So you're looking for policy solutions from us, correct, Yana and Janay?
Yeah, I, I think, I think that's part of it, right? I think the, I think the barrier reduction, I mean, you said it very well. I think that is, that is clearly an issue. I think some of the other areas that we're working around in the catalyzing neighborhood investment strategy is around the, the, the number of vacant and underutilized properties that the city and the county have at their disposal, that community sees as an asset. that community sees as an asset and want to reactivate for their use and towards a purpose of wealth building in community. And so how do we unlock those properties in a way to do that? So there's the tax scavenger sale, there's the annual tax scale. How do we, you know, provide the resources? Is that, is there some tax forgiveness? Is there a pot of money? I do think, you know, the, the American Rescue Plan dollars do provide a significant amount of flexibility to the county to invest, uh, in, in something like this. And the city is using some of its dollars for, um, for the, their community wealth, um, building opportunity. So it is something the county can consider. Is there some catalyzing dollars that they can, they can allocate? And that's at a, um, a, a greater scale than we would have to deploy immediately on this. So really thinking about that.
Thank you. Thank you, Morgan. Um, so, uh, we're going to move on to the balance of our festivities here. And we invite our, uh, guests who, whose contributions today have been invaluable. And we're deeply grateful to both of you to stick around and listen in if you have the time and the inclination. Uh, but I, I do want to move on to ensure that we cover the rest of our agenda. Now, um, I'm going to call upon, uh, Commissioner Freeman uh, to give a, a report on the working group that, uh, she and Commissioner Raymer have, uh, have, uh, very graciously agreed to lead. So, uh, Commissioner Freeman, if you would like to fill us in on where, where you are. And I know you've had some meetings since last month, and that would be very, very helpful, and we can flesh that out then.
Oh, absolutely. Um, thank you. Um, thank you, Chicago Community Trust, for your presentation. It's extremely timely. Um, and I appreciate the diligence that you guys have done around the community investment vehicles, particularly around engaging, um, engaging communities around development. So the city has Invest Southwest going on, Chicago Prize is going on, but there often is not a real vehicle for populations who are living in communities to reap the upside of the revitalization and potentially of what will eventually be gentrification. So, um, I did have my hand raised, so before I go into my report, I did want to kind of say, I would be interested for the county to provide money. For me, this is really more than a policy ask. It is really a cut the check ask. Um, and diverting those resources in such a way to allow residents and localized developers who have been in communities and providing sweat equity. And, you know, I sit in conversations and tables, and the first thing they ask as a developer is, what's your equity? Well, if I have lived in an underserved neighborhood, I've been putting in equity for the last 15 years by not having a grocery store I can shop at, by having inadequate education, by really not having trees and green grass and amenities that I can walk to. So at a point where there is an opportunity for folks to participate in a process, particularly because they have a certain level of subject matter expertise, this is really an opportunity to catalyze that with real dollars. So I did want to throw that out there. Um, moving into the report, um, Chicago Community Loan Fund, who I think is on the call, but they are not on the Zoom end of it. I think they're watching live, um, has expressed some interest in joining the commission as well as the working group. So right now, our working group has evolved from the initial members to also include a representative from the mayor's office, from the United Way, um, as well as a few other organizations. And so the conversations continue to be around, what do these vehicles look like? Um, initially, we started out with evaluating the community investment trust model and then expanding it more to the community investment vehicle so that there are multiple options for communities to participate, um, in these opportunities. And so we're meeting currently the Tuesday, the first Tuesday of every month. Uh, so if there is any other commissioners on the call who are interested in joining, or at least having follow-up conversations, that would be great. Um, and Mark, if you or Wendy could give the, the report on what, how the last meeting went, um, just because I was not able to stay on for that call, and I do know that conversation seemed to, I, I had it still going on, but I couldn't, I couldn't hear what was happening. So, um, what, is there anything else that needs to be?
Commissioner Raymer, would you like to do that, or shall I?
Go for it.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, the, the commission will recall that, uh, our January meeting, uh, uh, was occupied in large measure with, uh, the Community Investment Trust. And, uh, and John Haynes, uh, from Mercy Corps did make a presentation and is seeking to work with the county on that effort. Uh, he in fact has had some conversations, uh, with Dr. Gail and some others at the trust, as well as many other people. Uh, it's probably Loan Fund, David Feinberg and others. Um, and, um, inasmuch as, um, the presentation today from the trust um, was intended really to broaden our appreciation of the opportunities here. Uh, we concluded that the working group, which had been known as the, um, as the Community Investment Trust Working Group, is now going to be the Community Investment Vehicle Working Group. And, uh, so as to allow us, uh, you know, the, the, the greatest possible opportunity to add value and drive change. Uh, Commissioner Freeman, as you'll recall, uh, you were, uh, advancing the notion that we should be, um, exploring the establishment of an investment fund, uh, which might be used for various community purposes around real estate development and the like. Uh, so, uh, out of that last meeting, and this really will uh, resonate with, uh, the commissioners who attended our last meeting, uh, we have now developed, uh, resolutions that, uh, I think it's probably timely to, uh, present to the commission for its approval. And, uh, I will read these resolutions to you. Uh, I think you'll find them non-controversial, and consequently, I think we can prove them by uh, voice vote, although I will invite any contributions for, uh, edits uh, or expansions for that matter, but I will, I will read this to you. Comes in the form of two companion resolutions. Uh, resolve that, given the urgent plight of under-restored communities within Cook County, the Cook County Commission on Social Innovation shall seek to catalyze interest among nonprofit organizations, foundations, and social enterprises in the collaborative development and implementation of a community investment fund and other community investment vehicles. So that's part one is really to, uh, share, share the importance of of approaching this on a cooperative basis among the various necessary or desirable stakeholders to achieve mission here. And then the second, resolve further that should a critical mass of buy-in emerge, the commission shall develop a proposal for the county board's consideration to dedicate appropriate county resources to help support such an initiative. So the idea is really to plant some seeds, see where, uh, the greatest support lies within those actors who are likely to be most um, consequential as we move forward. Uh, the trust clearly being one of those players. Um, so that's the res, those are the two resolutions. And, uh, I, I, you know, if anyone has any input, reaction, uh, I, I think we'd be thrilled to hear that. And, uh, uh, is, is there such, uh, or, or questions or comments? I think this would be a good time to, uh, to consider them.
Mark, it's Howard. I just have a quick question of, uh, whether Commissioner Anaya has seen these resolutions?
Yes, she has.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? Again, I don't think they're terribly, uh, controversial. Uh, let me, let me call a vote here, and again, voice votes. Uh, and the whole idea is really for the working group initially to, as it expands, and it will expand, uh, to, uh, test the market here, initially the marketplace of ideas. And then to the extent a coalition can be created, an informal coalition, so it may be, uh, then come back to the commission uh, and see what it is we might reasonably seek to incubate with a view toward coming up with specific, uh, actionable policies or even ordinances for the county board's consideration. So, um, I will take these together as a consolidated resolution. Um, and, uh, yay or nay will do it. Uh, so all those in favor, please say yay.
Yay.
Right.
And any opposed?
Aye.
Any, a little slower? Uh, any, any abstentions? I like that. I, I don't, I don't like abstentions so much. Okay, so thank you. And we'll, we'll consider that kind of the initial marching orders for the working group. And what, what I do want to mention is to, uh, we have two working groups today. We will have others in the fullness of time. But as to the, uh, working group that, uh, Commissioner Freeman and Commissioner Raymer are currently leading. And Commissioner Brutus was very generous with his time as well, and some other folks over the course of the last month. Um, by no means are we limited to the intellectual firepower of the commission, as impressive as it is. Uh, if there are others who can contribute to this effort and are willing to do so, to whatever degree, we'd love to have them join the working group uh, to gain the benefit of their expertise and experience and institutional knowledge, as well as the platforms they themselves leverage. And that would be the cases to each of our, of our working groups. So, um, is there anything more that, uh, you wanted to say, Commissioner Freeman, or Commissioner Raymer for that matter, with respect to the working group?
No, all are welcome. It's a real, um, moment in time here for the city of Chicago, you know?
Yeah. My, my expectation is interest should broaden now, given that we were originally focusing on one specific strategy, uh, the trust with or without, uh, Mercy Corps. And now we're kind of looking at the broader landscape. Uh, and different people may want to grab a hold of different pieces of it, and that's perfectly fine. That's what this process invites. Um, I, I do want to also mention, we're kind of running out of time here, but, uh, Commissioner Aglope and I have connected. She, uh, chairs the working group that is to, um, collaborate with the Obama Foundation uh, relative to scaling up its, uh, methodology of, um, of, um, expanding the talent pipeline uh, to diverse populations, uh, that they are employing in connection with, uh, the building of the Obama Presidential Center. And the idea is now, uh, to kind of tell that story to the broader universe of employers, not only looking at, um, not only looking at the construction trades, but potentially other uh, significant employers. And I just want to let you know that we've had some conversations with, uh, the leadership uh, of the Obama Foundation as recently as yesterday. And, uh, they're assembling significant materials for our use. Uh, they are, uh, identifying a point person with whom we will be working initially on this project, although I've been told that beyond that, uh, others within the leadership of the foundation uh, want to get very actively involved in what we're doing. So, uh, Commissioner Aglope, you wanted to say something, and I invite that, please. No, you're just, you're just giving this a thumbs up.
Just giving a thumbs up. I'm just giving a thumbs up on that, yeah.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, but you know, we all did say at the last one, if you have the, um, working knowledge and lived experiences from workforce development and feel that you have an interest in committing to these planning meetings, um, please let me know. I think everybody, uh, you know, we're, we're supportive of our last meeting, but, um, shoot me an email. I'll put my email in the chat, uh, uh, about your interest and what you could bring to the table. Um, that would be extremely helpful, as I think, I think Mark and I were talking, but I probably like, you said, basically, everybody expressed interest, uh, but it was, you know, more or less support. But if you really are interested, like, setting aside time, we are also cognizant of everybody's capacity, knowing also that the working groups that, that are also ramping up from this, that would be great. Thank you.
I should tell you, though, i- i- as Jerry says that, she has taken on enormous responsibilities with the S B A, and she's just settling in, yet at the same time is so generous with her time that she's willing to lead this effort. So thank you to, to Jerry again. I, I should also say there too, not only the commission, as important as the commission is to each of these uh, activities, uh, to the extent you're aware of other folks who might want to join in. And workforce development is the obvious, uh, driver. But I think, you know, as we kind of look at the, um, racial reckoning we've encountered, the, um, the social determinants of health during COVID, uh, employers of all sizes are expanding what corporate social responsibility means. And, uh, looking at social impact as a new form of currency and revisiting their, uh, diversity, equity and inclusion criteria and objectives. Uh, so I mean, there are a lot of different ways to look at what we're talking about here. But to the, but from purely a self-interested point of view, to the extent that employers can expand the talent pool, uh, they're only going to be better off, and they're going to be having better products, better services. Uh, and their leadership will be emulated by others as well. So I think there are lots of ways to think about this initiative too. So any of you who are interested, please, uh, let Jerry know. And if there are others that you know who might be willing to join that effort, um, strengthen numbers. We, we need everybody who's willing to roll up shirt sleeves and work with us, because these are extraordinarily important, uh, initiatives. And, uh, uh, a- a- as I like to say, uh, time is our enemy. Uh, so the sooner we can address these things effectively and impactfully, the better. So again, I, um, I, yeah, thank you, Socia. Appreciate that as well. So, uh,
Mark, just one quick, oh, one quick thing on the workforce. Um, if you're also interested, we know that we are for a job recovery. We're going to be majority minority workforce, but yet the more we can also get for those who are self-employed, also go into the workforce with the trades and the emerging vocations that are coming out, they will also grow their own businesses, be it micro or large, and they tend to hire diverse workers too. So I was looking at this from a lens of equity and diversity of how can we also spur that diverse workforce, not only from, uh, labor lens, but from the workforce lens of ownership.
Exactly right. And ownership is the way we bridge the divide. Um, so is there, I don't know if there are any further comments on any of those points? If so, let's entertain them. If not, is there any, uh, new business that has not come before the meeting? I should tell you, uh, each of the months in this year, I think you will probably agree, we've had some pretty exciting, uh, testimony. And from that exciting testimony, uh, has derived very significant initiatives that are now in development. Uh, next month will be no different. And, uh, the, the goal is to do that each and every month, and eventually we'll say, hey, we have enough on our planner and we have achieved success. Well, I don't know if we'll ever achieve success, but, uh, there's a lot to do and no shortage of interest in doing it. So thanks to each and every one of you. If there is any new business, uh, this is the time to raise it.
Yeah, this is, um, Socia Espinoza, I just, I'm just a quick question. I haven't been here in a couple of meetings. I just want to clarify, or at least know, um, we used to organize around committees. It sounds like those committees are no longer meeting.
We are no, yeah, good question. We are no longer operating through a committee system, but rather ad hoc working groups. I will explain to you what the reason is. Uh, the Open Meetings Act, uh, imposes, uh, its requirements on any formal committees, just as it would on a, on the commission itself. Whereas by having ad hoc working groups, we, uh, uh, do not need to comply with those, which allows us the luxury of having informal meetings between formal commission meetings without going through the notice requirements and having them all available to the public, which logistically, although I'm a great believer in transparency, would just be very difficult if we have two or three people trying to work together on a project to say, well, we can't do it Tuesday. We have to give notice. We have to post it. We have to. So here, the idea is really just in the interest of facilitating, uh, outcomes in an accelerated basis. We've moved from formal committees to these ad hoc working groups. That's the explanation. Good question. Any other, uh, business to come before the meeting?
Mark, it's Howard. How are you? I, I just wanted to make a comment about this workforce development. Um, my current work takes me, uh, to work with the University of Illinois System and the Discovery Partners Institute on tech education. Uh, part of it is upskilling, of course, uh, Part of it is upskilling, of course, of particular segments of, of the county and the region in tech. But I would also emphasize that this, and this work is going to go long after the Obama, the OPC Center is built in the fact that our state does not have enough teachers certified in tech to teach things like CS, computer science. And one of the things that's got to start now, and we're working on it in the University of Illinois System, and I hope to bring them before this commission down the road with the county, is the investment in the future of teaching the teachers. Because you can't get students interested in tech without teachers in the schools. And literally, that's part of the solution long-term. So I wanted to just mention, not all things are going to be observable very quickly.
Commissioner Mills, thank you for that. And DPI is doing extraordinary work. As is Commissioner Malone's group, in which I have a, a role representing two clients there. So, and that's another place that I think we see intersection of purpose. And I'd love to get those folks here too. So we will know everything in its time. Commissioner Malone, I think you, did you have a question? We're happy to hear.
Something I just want to flag. I, I think it's really important that everyone, we not slide past a comment that was made today on the call from Janay and Ayana. And it's about impact ecosystems. And for those of you who maybe aren't as close to nonprofit work, it is extremely, extremely difficult to do equitable development, which is what I would consider community investment vehicles, without sustained, funded, strong organizations that are scaled to institutions. It's extremely challenging. So there is no coalition of work where we just bring in a whole bunch of nonprofits that represent neighborhoods and like, and like, help us, right? Because like, they can't afford to just do that. So it's important to be mindful about the barriers that are in place for people to even be able to engage with our work, as well as be able to scale to be institutions to support the impact we're talking about. And so without that institute, that scaling from small to midsize business or community org to institution, it's really difficult to do transformative, long-term, sustainable change and long-term sustainable impact without that ecosystem that's funded.
Thank you, Commissioner Malone. And I think today's presentation was very, very productive in lots of different ways, not the least of which was in identifying clearly what those ingredients include. So thanks again to our witnesses. Thanks again to the commission. And I think we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Howard.
Second.
There is seconds, Commissioner Yonan. So we stand adjourn until next month. Thanks to each and every one of you. Stay safe, stay healthy.
Thank you. Good night. Thanks, everybody.